All right, good evening and welcome to Heartland Township and the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, May 28th. We'd like to be in with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
Thank you. Keith, would you take role, please?
I sure can. Mr. Fox is here. Jeff Newsom.
I'm here.
Bill Kalani.
Here.
Sue Grissom.
Here.
Mike Mitchell.
Here.
And Tom Murphy. We have Mr. Campbell here, too.
All right, thank you. Next up, item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Kalani, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, may motion carries. Next up, item five A, approval of our Planning Commission meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve our Planning Commission meeting minutes of April 30th, 2015.
You support that?
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Grissom, a second from Commissioner Voight. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, may motion carries. Next up, item six, call to the public. Anyone this evening have anything to say? Address the commission. Seeing none, we'll close item six. We have no public hearing this evening on item seven, so we'll move right on to item eight A, which is site plan application number 528, Woods Edge Final Site Condominium. And with that, we'll invite the applicants up, then we'll turn the floor over to our planning director, David Campbell, and then we'll have you introduce yourself and give your presentation. With that, we'll give it to Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. The first item up for potential action on the Planning Commission's agenda this evening is site plan application number 528. This is the final site condominium for Woods Edge. Woods Edge is a proposed 21-unit site condominium, 21 single-family homes on the south side of Maxfield Road, at the south end of Maxfield Lake, on a property that is just under 21 acres. The process for a site condominium per the Heartland Township zoning ordinance is that the preliminary site condominium plan comes before the Planning Commission for a recommendation, and then the township board for action, and then the final site condominium plan also comes before the Planning Commission for a recommendation and the township board for formal action, or final approval. So we are at the step where the final site condominium is before the Planning Commission, and if the Planning Commission so chooses this evening, they would have the option of making a recommendation of this final site condo to the township board for their potential approval at their next available meeting. So this is a plan that this Planning Commission has seen twice before, actually, most recently on April 12th, March 12th, where they made a recommendation, this Planning Commission made a recommendation to the board for preliminary approval. That preliminary approval was granted by the township board on April 7th, conditional on the applicant coming back with their final site condominium, addressing a number of issues on the condominium plans, and more significantly in the condominium documents, the master deed and the bylaws. The plans themselves are relatively unchanged from what the Planning Commission saw back in March. Still 21 units, same layout, same 25-foot natural vegetation buffer around the perimeter. But what this step in the process is meant to do is kind of formalize all of those design elements that we saw on the plan into the master deed. For example, providing a conservation easement for that 25-foot landscape perimeter buffer, providing the maintenance agreement for the proposed private road and the proposed shared driveway, providing the commitment to maintaining the secondary emergency access, keeping it clear and keeping it maintained in perpetuity. And so that what is, the Planning Commission is being asked to take a look at tonight is one last look at the plan potentially, and a look at the master deed and bylaws, and potentially make a recommendation to the township board for final approval. The master deed and bylaws were submitted, and then some revisions were made and were resubmitted, and the key player in taking a look at those is the township attorney. Your planning director looks at them as well, but the township attorney is certainly much more equipped to get into the legalese of the condominium documents, particularly the deed and the bylaws. So the township attorney was asked to kind of do a quick turnaround on the master deed, given when the revised submittal was received, and was able to do that. However, his comments didn't get back to me until the day after I finalized my planning department's review letter. So you'll notice in my review letter dated May 20th that there's a preamble trying to explain that. I did have an opportunity to discuss with the township attorney as I was finalizing my letter, that he felt that from what he was seeing from the master deed and the bylaws, he was comfortable that the issues that he was going to bring up could be resolved as a condition of approval by the Planning Commission and the board. And so what the Planning Commission's, or the, excuse me, the Planning Department's recommendation in our May 20th letter is that if the Planning Commission is comfortable with the site plan that they've seen once before at the preliminary stage, and is comfortable that the staff, the planning department, and the township attorney can work with the applicant on finalizing some of the outstanding items in the master deed and bylaws, then the recommendation of staff and the recommendation of the attorney is for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the township board that they approve the final site condominium plan contingent on the applicant making the necessary revisions to the master deed and to the bylaws. That is meant to be my general overview. I can certainly get into more of the detail of the plan and the layout and the issues that we wanted to see covered in the master deed and bylaws, or I can leave it to the Planning Commission to ask any questions, or if we wanted to turn it over to the applicant is up to you, Mr. Chair.
Why don't we turn it over to the applicants? They can introduce themselves and give any presentation you'd like to add on our second or third meeting here now, and then maybe we can have a conversation about with any question and answers that need to take place.
All right, well, I can start. I'm probably the newest member to this table, anyway. My name is Kathy Reister. I am the attorney who has been assisting the applicants with the legal documents with the master deed, and so I've not been involved in the technical drawings, but have prepared the legal documents. And I think Mr. Campbell laid out the overview. I mean, I think this project is at its final stages. With respect to the master deed and the legal documents, I did have some extensive conversations with the township attorney regarding some of the concerns. As he indicated, we did somewhat of a quick turnaround, but we got those in, and as you'll see from his letter, he did generally approve the documents. What he did do, and he included it, I think, in your packet, was he, I sent him our, a word form of the document. He actually marked up the changes he wanted to see so we could take a look at those, and we have no problem whatsoever with all of the changes that he has proposed, and we're going to incorporate those 100 percent. So we don't have any problem with the commission making a recommendation that the project go forward with the changes recommended by the attorney, because he sent the document back to me, I just have to accept all the changes, and the document is good to go. So we feel from a legal standpoint, those issues have been addressed, and we're good to go from there. So it has been a pretty smooth process. So on that side, we're very comfortable. We didn't see anything in the proposed changes from the township attorney that we find objectionable. So they're all acceptable, and we think the documents are in good shape. So that's it from the documentation side, and I'll let the applicants introduce themselves and add any other comments on the project if they'd like to.
I'm Steve Bellinger, one of the partners of SBTT Properties.
I'm Tom Lekko, the other partner, and we're pretty excited to answer the question. I think it'd be a real benefit for the community, and we want to make it a nice place for our people to live in.
Any questions from the Planning Commission for the applicant? Please understand, we have seen this plan several occasions, so if we don't have a lot of questions, we've sort of worked those out through previous meetings. As been stated, we're at the final step right now.
I'll move to recommend the Heartland Township Board approve the final site condominium plan for Woods Edge, site plan number 528, conditional upon the following. One, the applicant addressing all outstanding items noted in the review letters of the planning department, fire marshal, Department of Public Works, and the township engineer in the construction plans and/or stamping sets. And number two, the applicant submitting revised condominium documents for administrative review and approval from both the township attorney and the planning department prior to the submittal of the construction plans.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Kalani, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Is there any further discussion?
I may want to point out that the applicant's attorney is correct, that township attorney provided a redline version of proposed revisions to the master deed, and I guess what I would want to add is that the planning department in our review letter also had some additional items, and I would just, my point being that I don't think it's as easy as just hitting "accept changes" on the township attorney's version. Please do us all a favor, and if this is to move forward, go through the planning department's review letter, too, and just make sure all those items are covered as well.
Is that acceptable to you to?
I think that's encompassed in the motion. I just want, I thought they're repeating.
Okay. Dave, item three in your recommended motion language, does that need to be included?
Not unless the Planning Commission desires any additional conditions to those that I am recommending.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Kalani, a second from Commissioner Mitchell to recommend approval. Any further discussion?
Just want to say again, once again, welcome to Heartland, and good luck on your adventure.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, may motion carries. Congratulations and thank you.
Aye.
Next up would be item eight B, site plan number 532, Walden Woods Resort. You guys would like to come forward, we'll turn the floor over to David, and then we'll ask you to give your presentation. Dave?
Mr. Chairperson, I'd like to ask that I excuse myself. The reason why I'm asking to excuse myself is more than a year ago, Mr. Kraus asked me to come and do a quick study, looking at where a pad area would go for a future pavilion, as well as also looking where additional parking could be added to the site. Though the quick study I did really is nothing to do with what we see here today in the packet, it is still the same topic. So just, and so just to avoid any appearance that there's any impropriety, I'm asking that I don't participate in any, you know, discussion tonight. I'd like to leave them alone, if that's okay.
That would be fine. Thank you.
So the next item that the Planning Commission has an opportunity to, if they so choose, take action on is site plan application number 532. The site plan proposes a number of improvements to the existing Walden Woods Resort, including a concrete pad upon which the resort would hold tented outdoor events, a gravel parking area to accommodate parking for that proposed event area, along with overflow parking for other events potentially, and at least two new gravel driveways, and an expansion of existing paved driveway. This is a proposal that has a bit of history with it, that I'll do my best to summarize here this evening, but I hope did a better job summarizing in the planning department's review letter. Back in December, the planning department had reason to go out and take a visit at Walden Woods based on some reports of significant earth work going on. We did that. Brian Kraus met us there and showed us around and explained what was going on. And based on what we heard, we felt that there was good reason to reach out to the Lewis County Drain Commission, given the amount of earth work and the impacts that it may have on storm drainage patterns. And then the Drain Commission also reached out to the MDEQ. Between the township, the county, and the states, Mr. Kraus and the Walden Woods Resort received a number of letters directing him to stop work and seek the necessary approvals. The MDEQ was kind of the first to get back to Mr. Kraus in April, saying that they would retroactively approve the work to the dredging that had been done along Lake Walden, so long as the drainage improvements that went along with it could be conducted within a certain amount of time. So at the risk of speaking for Mr. Kraus, his intent is to try to get some of those issues approved at the township level so that he can then comply with the state's conditions of their approval, the state being the Department of Environmental Quality. But in addition to meeting those requirements as far as the storm drainage and the issues around Lake Walden, the applicant is also asking for some improvements in order to, as he describes it, improve the opportunities for hosting events at Walden Woods Resort. So the subject area that we're talking about is on the south end of the existing Cromeane Lodge, which is right here on the aerial. What has happened is in December or sometime prior, this pond that you see here was filled in, and some other grading and land balancing was conducted around the pond, with the intent of using this reclaimed area for a better area in which the resort could host events. And once the township was made aware of that, we made it clear to the applicant what would need to happen on the township's end in order for those types of improvements to proceed. We had a meeting with Mr. Kraus and Mr. Perry in March, where we discussed what the appropriate procedure would be as far as approvals for a project such as this, given that Walden Woods is a longstanding anchor in this community, and given that they are somewhat unique in the respect that they do have the plant development zoning on the property, that puts them in sort of a unique category of what are the procedures and requirements for them to do improvements on their property. That meeting in March that the Site Plan Committee had with Mr. Kraus and his representatives, the outcome of that was that, the township stance was that any new improvements that are done on the Walden Woods property should be done in compliance with the current standards of the Heartland Township's zoning ordinance. For example, if Walden Woods wished to put in a new parking lot, then that new parking lot should comply with the current standards of the Heartland Township zoning ordinance. If they want to put in new commercial driveways, those new commercial driveways should comply with the current standards of the Heartland Township zoning ordinance. Mr. Kraus and his representatives heard that message and proceeded on with a submittal that you have before you tonight. That submittal includes, and I'll, if you bear with me, I'll get to the site plan. So along the eastern edge of Lake Walden, again, up here is the, excuse me, Cromeane Lodge to the north. This area in through here is proposed to have this 50-by-100 concrete pad, a gravel parking lot adjacent to the east, a new commercial driveway, kind of a loop driveway to the existing driveways, I presume, and Mr. Kraus could maybe speak to this better, but I presume this is meant to be kind of a drop-off drive for any events being hosted here. And replacement of an existing commercial drive with this one that comes from the existing drive head south down to the existing parking lot between the Friendship and Sunshine Lodges. In addition, they also are seeking to widen this existing paved drive that runs east-west and is north of the project area. So as stated in my letter, they're seeking site plan approval for a number of issues, and I tried to bullet point those out on page three. Retroactive approval of the filling activity, approval of the concrete pad, approval of an uncurbed gravel parking surface, approval of two gravel commercial driveways, expansion of an existing commercial driveway, approval of the stormwater management facilities, and a series of waivers for the landscaping and lighting requirements for a commercial parking lot and for a commercial stormwater detention facility, as is proposed along the north side of the parking lot. The recommendation of the planning department, based on all the conversations that we had with the applicant leading up to the submittal, is that the township would be well-served to approve certain components of these proposed improvements, but not all of them. And the ones that I, the planning department is not inclined to recommend approval on is the gravel parking lot, the gravel driveways, and the concrete pad. With respect to the gravel driveways and the gravel parking lot, the position of the planning department is that this is a commercial enterprise, and per our zoning ordinance, off-street parking lots for commercial uses have to be paved, have to be curbed, have to be striped, have to be landscaped, have to be illuminated, none of which is proposed here. And the township would be putting itself in a difficult position if they were to approve a gravel parking lot in this instance, but then not approve it for a lot of the same rationale in, on another commercial use. With respect to the planning department's recommendation to not accept the concrete pad, the rationale behind that is that the pad has the potential to increase the intensity of the existing use, and I know Mr. Kraus submitted to us a letter and probably want to speak this evening about his perspective on that, but the planning commission, or the planning department, has to feel that if you put a 50-by-100 concrete pad in an area that doesn't currently accommodate outdoor uses, that has the potential either now or in the future to increase either the frequency or the size of the outdoor events to be hosted at Walden Woods. And when you increase the intensity of a use, then per the zoning ordinance, you are obligated to bring that use up to reasonable compliance with the zoning ordinance. And the planning department did not feel that, based on the proposal for a gravel driveway and a gravel parking lot, that Walden Woods is being brought up to a reasonable proportional level of compliance to accommodate the potential increase in intensity that that concrete pad would provide for. So having said all that, the property is zone plan development, which does give the Planning Commission some discretion to, and some flexibility on a strict application of the zoning ordinance. But the planning department's position is to allow certain aspects of this proposal, but not other aspects, based on the rationale that I tried to summarize this evening, and based on the rationale that I tried to summarize in better detail in my department's review letter of May 20th. I am happy to pause there and take any questions, or if the Planning Commission so chooses, turn it over to the applicant for their overview of the project.
Why don't we do that? Why don't you introduce yourself, give us your overview and comments, and then we can do a question and answer.
Sure. I'm Brian Kraus, president of Walden Woods Resort. I'm here basically because we had a really good meeting with some of you to try to figure out how would we move this forward, what would we do. During that meeting, I feel like, in terms of how I presented the project, that I've given you the impression that we're going to be intensifying the use, and I really don't feel that that's the case. So that's why I'm coming back again to explain, perhaps in a little bit better language, what we're planning on doing. I also wanted to kind of take a step back first and kind of talk a little bit about the background of the project. Initially, it was, in our perspective, a landscaping project, of kind of opening up the area and seeing what we could do. So we hired a landscape architect, and we planned to put in a concrete pad, some walking paths, and some better parking. So our landscape architect had sketched out the idea of moving some parking back behind the pond, but when we opened it up, we found that the pond was saturating the whole area, that what had happened is it's a stormwater management pond, it's not a natural pond. It has no inlet, no outlet, it has no, you know, feed to it, except for the drainage from the area, the surface water and groundwater. And so this pond we built back in 1984 is my estimate of it, and the pond had basically failed to serve its purpose as a stormwater management pond. It was starting to overflow and ruin the whole area. And the primary reason we found was because there's a drain pipe that feeds from the pond out to the lake, and that drain had heaved over the years. The winter, you know, freeze thaw cycle had kicked that up, forcing us to say, okay, well, how do we fix this? Well, the answer's pretty obvious, we have to go in and reset that pipe. When we reset the pipe, what we found was the water level in the pond had dropped about three feet. So a very substantial drop. Inadvertently, that caused a hazard, because now we have this steep drop-off in our pond. It's also an eyesore. And it also brought into question of, well, do we really need this pond? Is this anything we really need to retain the water here for? That we have the lake is the ultimate retention basin, there was no purpose served there. What we really needed was some kind of a swell mechanism that would deal with any surface runoff that we had to deal with. So, you know, I hired a contractor to come and help clear out the area, and he kind of sketched in a simple bioswell to manage that stormwater flow, and then we filled in the pond with some sand from our property. So it was clean sand, it was excellent sand, actually. Anyway, then, you know, at that point, the whole previous concept with the landscape architect kind of went out the window, and now we went, and I hired Wayne to come in and design this whole engineered site, and say, okay, what is it that we want to have here, and how would we lay this out? So he designed a really professional bioswell that would handle the runoff from presumed impervious surfaces now. If we were going to build a drive in the back, and if we were going to put in parking there and a pad, we'd have more runoff that needed to be managed. So you needed a much more engineered solution, which is what we have in front of you. So we've designed this, but overall, it's a very minor change to our overall plan, in that, you know, we believe that it makes perfect sense within Walden Woods. What we're trying to do isn't an anomaly at all in our history, and if, I'll show you some pictures when we get going here, but, you know, it just, there's no need to build this whole engineered swell unless we're able to move ahead with some of these other components, that something much more less engineered would probably work just fine there. But, you know, the zoning standards in Heartland have developed, and that, you know, when the ordinance is applied to this minor site change, without kind of taking into the fact that Walden Woods is a very unique operation, you get into this very real culture clash that says, okay, here we've got this rustic retreat, this outdoorsman-type place that you want to get away to. We emulate the great north of Michigan, that people come from all over the country to be at. But the great thing about it is it's right here, you know? It's right here in Heartland. And, you know, it's an amazing property, but, you know, we could not build Walden Woods under Heartland's standards for commercial, for the commercial zoning ordinance. You know, and that's what we're kind of dropping this into at this point, that this whole thing is getting thrown into the commercial zoning ordinance, instead of saying, okay, what would the PD allow? So, you know, in 1959, when Michigan approved these planning acts that allowed township zoning, it was understood that not one set of regulations affecting all the land would be universally applied, and thus we have things like the plant development that's in front of us, and there has to be some flexibility. So, you know, Heartland is really fortunate to have this problem, in the sense that we've got a property that doesn't fit the standard, you know, template for the zoning ordinance. And it's a treasure, just the way it is. In fact, I wrote down some of our marketing material, that Walden Woods' goal is to deliver that up-north feel and beauty without the long drive. Walden Woods Banquet and Conference Center is one of Michigan's most unique wedding venues, nestled among 400 acres of beautiful rolling cutting side and overlooking the scenic shores of a private spring-fed lake. In this fairy tale setting, complete with a 200-foot aisleway and a front porch that is reminiscent of the old South, you can step back in time and experiencing the wedding reception of your dreams. That's not anything like M59 and US 23, that, you know, the shops at Walden Woods, or Walmart, or the Meyer Development, you know, those things have their set of requirements, and I'm just trying to figure out what is the right set for Walden Woods, and given this very minor change, I'm asking for a variance from the ordinance. We believe this should be allowed, both because we have an approved PD with the township, and because further development at Walden Woods should be consistent with what Walden Woods is, and not 59 and 23. Clearly, those have different types of requirements.
Do you have the pictures? You want to?
Dave, can you give us control of your system?
So the dean of the School of Architecture originally designed Walden Woods, the buildings there, in probably about 1923, and they're wood buildings that were milled on the site. In 1924 and 25, they were put up, these big grand lodges and buildings, and, you know, there's no massive lighting plan, because people expect to see the And, you know, there's no massive lighting plan, because people expect to see the stars when they're at the resort. It's an outdoor retreat.
Just go to the beginning, first one. You just run through them, yeah? We just flip through them, you can flip through.
That's a picture of our parking lot. It's all gravel parking lots that we have at Friendship and Sunshine in that whole area. So basically, what I'm proposing is expanding that so that we have more. These are, they're entrance ways, you know, there's no lack of trees or nature at Walden Woods. It's just a beautiful, incredible site. 10 mile an hour speed limits. It's completely different than anywhere else in Heartland. You know, you're not allowed to go, a lot of one ways, where it's just one road going down, you're supposed to drive slow, we protect our squirrels there. You know, that's what we're worried about, is the kids and the squirrels running around and making sure we have a safe environment. Here's a picture where we had some pavement, but then it goes into, most of our campground roads are all gravel as well. And we maintain all of those. This is a picture of the Friendship lawn out front, that's a picture of the Sunshine lawn, they're right next to each other. It's one adjacent property, and it's vast. We have tons of space. This is existing space that we use all the time. This is the porch on Sunshine, very rustic. We've got these boats and things on the lake, no gas motors, very quiet place to relax with your family, my kids, actually, this is one of our trails going around the lake. This is our only parking area where it's actually paved. This is right in front of Cromeine, but 80% of the parking at Cromeine is gravel parking. And it's worked fine, we've never had any incidents. This is just assigned to the banquet's parking. You can see in front of it, it's all gravel. So we've got a road going in and then gravel to the left there. So I just want you to get a sense of, this is the place that we're talking about doing this. And we're already doing this, so it's not like we're adding this. So that's really the next part of this, this intensity of use question that was raised. You know, that Friendship Site Project is about improving our product, and we should be allowed to improve our product in Heartland. We're not expanding or intensifying the use. We already conduct numerous events at this location every summer weekend. However, we're determined that the area's not up to our standards, and we need to improve our product. People expect the best. We have won Wedding Venue of the Year for the last, I believe, five years in a row. And it just keeps getting better because we're making these little improvements to make Walden Woods the place that people want to come to. We bring hundreds, probably thousands of guests every month to Heartland. And they, you know, they shop here, they stay here, they enjoy being in Heartland. And so, you know, it's a very positive contribution. We hope these improvements will allow us to better serve our guests and make handling slightly larger groups easier. While we typically serve 150 guests under our tent today, 200 is not uncommon. And we do single events as large as 300 people in this location. Sometimes, we even have multiple events, like multiple tents up. You can see the space that we have is enormous there, that we'll have up to 500 people at outdoor events in this location. So, you know, this is going on, and this has been going on for decades. We're hoping to create, we're hoping a concrete pad and better parking will make serving 200 guests easier for us and more pleasant for the guests. But there's nothing limiting us to seating less than 200 right now. We could do 200 if we wanted to any day of the week. It's just hard to manage the quality of our product on grass. As you might imagine, the conditions constantly change. You've got people in high-heeled shoes, you've got, you know, tables and chairs on grass. It's just not a high-quality, it's not the high-quality product that we are expected to provide at Walden Woods. Our goal is to improve the quality, not the quantity of our product. And, you know, the space is the space. It's there. We can put up 500-person tents, 200-person tents, 100-person tents. Whether there's a concrete slab underneath does not change that. It just makes it a better experience for our guests. We don't anticipate any more vehicles exiting or entering the resort at one time than we've ever had before. We see no reason why the township would want to not let this project happen, that it could only improve the quality of our outdoor events. And it's an exceptional location, it's just a beautiful resort, and all we're doing is adding more of the same. So the plan that we've been considering is a minor change to our overall site that would improve our existing outdoor venue. Basically, it's adding a concrete pad, which improves walking conditions for our guests and staff, the improved drainage, because the existing drainage system had failed, three, and creating an improved gravel parking area so that we have adequate parking nearby, and four, adding a back access drive, because we could ultimately eliminate the front drive. And that this makes the drive, you know, you don't want people driving right down the middle of your wedding venue either. So again, it just improves it, it doesn't add anything in terms of intensity. It's just a different location for that traffic to flow. So you can stop it, you could put a sign up in front of that road and say, no traffic through here, event in progress. And that would be our plan. So, I mean, I just want to, I want to make that as clear as I can, that this is not going to allow us in any way to do larger events. We already can do any size event, we already do these things, it will just make it better. You know, the next question or component of this too is seasonality, that, you know, it's important to keep in mind that this is only for summer use. Yeah, we can do a little bit in the late spring and early fall, but who wants to get married when it's, you know, raining ice? So it's really just a seasonal use-type facility. It can be used, it's for special occasions. The parking is also for overflow. It's not going to be used every day of the week, it's just going to be used during these events and when the events overflow from the Friendship and Sunshine parking lot, which I had shown in the picture earlier. So, you know, we currently park all over the place, and they park on the grass, which works. Again, you can improve the quality of the experience by giving them a better option, and that's my goal. You know, some guests, you know, don't stay very long, so, you know, you're not dealing with having tons and tons of cars there. You know, we have lots of parking spots available, and this will only improve the guest experience, I guess, in our mind. And as we're reading, that in the, you know, our basis for the variance in the parking area is to say, you know, per the township's ordinance, the planning commission may permit gravel surfaces for public or quasi-public parks and cemeteries that are seasonal and are limited-use facilities, provided the applicant or property owner provides sufficient evidence that the gravel surface will support the volume of traffic. So similarly, this exception may be applied to our access drive, that would be my assumption. The traffic on this site will be far less than the gravel surfaces that we have that serve as Cromeine, our main lodge, where, you know, we have our biggest weddings. And it will be obviously probably less than the Friendship and Sunshine Hall, because we actually do parking there, we have people parking at Sunshine and Friendship year-round, whereas this is only going to be in the summer. So, you know, in my mind, there's no question that the gravel surface will support the volume of traffic, and that we have adequately maintained our roads throughout the decades. We've never had any incidents of any issues with our roads or parking areas. So again, we're asking for the zoning ordinance variance so that we can all be developing in a way that's consistent with who we are. And Walden Woods has been, I guess, a model for Heartland since the beginning of time. I mean, it's been around since anyone can remember, in one shape or another. In fact, everybody remembers this Walden Woods, but before we built the big buildings, there were smaller buildings along the waterfront, there was another Walden Woods. It's been there for a long time, and it's been a rustic retreat, and we don't want that to change. That's why we don't think that, we hope, we're not asking for too much, when we say we need this small project to move ahead as planned, without doing with curb and gutter, without pavement, just like we have in other parking lots throughout the resort.
Do you have any other?
Yeah, a couple of quick comments. And this is, what you're seeing here is the parking lot, this is at Friendship?
Friendship.
Yeah. And this is one of the parking lots, right there in the same area, that's currently used today for events on the site that we're looking at. Now, keep in mind, with regard to use, not only is this seasonal, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, a quick calculation of timing based upon what Brian has conveyed to me in the past, you probably have no more than 18, 20 weekends that this site would be used, between mid-May and mid-September. That's 40 days of use, because it's really only used on weekends, there's not a lot of people get married on Tuesday, night, Tuesday, Thursday. I mean, it just, it doesn't happen. So essentially, you're looking at a parking lot that's probably going to be used somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 40, maybe 45 days, maximum use out of 365. By my calculation, that's something in the neighborhood of 12%. So it's not only seasonal, it's part-time season. And I agree, I mean, I hate to see us come in and putting curb and gutter, pavement, streetlights in a parking lot that's going to be used 10 or 12% of the time it's there. Because now we have to deal with the runoff from that. I mean, it's not just a cost item, but, cost is obviously one of the issues here, it's very expensive to put over. But this parking lot's going to get so little use. Every other parking lot in Walden Woods, except for the small one immediately adjacent to the Cromeine Lodge, is gravel. Every other one in the entire, the entire resort. And that one is paved, that's a year-round, full-time use facility. The Cromeine Lodge is used throughout the week, it's used year-round. So there's, there is a difference there. Will a gravel parking lot hold up to the traffic that's anticipated to be on it? Absolutely. There's no question about it. These are the gravel parking lots they have, the pictures we've been showing, they're just fine. They're used the same way, they're used on weekends. Otherwise, like these pictures during the week, there's nobody parking. So unlike the shops at Walden Woods, and the stores up and down 23 and 59, that have cars coming and going five days a week, six days a week, seven days a week, eight, 10, 12, 14 hours a day, the trips on those parking lots, the number of vehicle trips in those parking lots is enormous. The number of vehicle trips in these parking lots is insignificant. So gravel is a fine material, yes, we agree, we understand it doesn't meet the ordinance. But coming out to this, this picture here, and putting in curb and gutter and pavement and streetlights, makes absolutely no sense to the venue they have. And with regard to lighting, we showed you the picture, I think you saw it, the only, I think they're the only couple of lights anywhere in the entire campus, I'll see if I can get back to you real quick. The only parking lot lighting at all out there anywhere is right there, back up one, right there, in front of Cromeine. Once again, that's a facility that's used all the time, it's used year-round, and it's used differently. It's used for meetings, it's not all for weddings. The site we're looking at here is essentially a wedding venue.
Weddings, my family reunions.
Okay, family reunions, good use. Once again, we're going to put lights out there for bird roosts, that's what they'll be used for. So we recognize that the township ordinance serves a very valid purpose, and it's very necessary, particularly in a commercial enterprise, where you've got significant traffic, turnover, people are there for that. But they park out here now, adjacent to the drives, on lawns, in gravel parking areas. I'm not sure I understand what the difference is. From a stormwater perspective, we've been able to create a system that probably serves the purpose far better than what the original pond was. The pond that was out there had a straight pipe to the lake, essentially the straight pipe was plugged, it wasn't working right, as Brian explained to you, so that's come out. The bioswale is there to help treat the stormwater runoff, the surface water runoff, take out the sediments before it goes to the lake. It does have a restrictor device on the end of it, it does have a sediment filter, none of which was on the original pond. So what we proposed here is far better, but it was engineered, designed, and proposed to support pad and parking. It's essentially not necessary, or at least not the way it's currently designed, if none of that is perfect. So I'm not sure if we have anything else at this point. Happy to answer any questions you might have, engage in a conversation about where we might be able to go, or if you want to see any of these additional pictures.
Okay. Why don't we turn it to the commissioners, any questions, comments?
I have one, I guess. I'm a little confused. You bragged about the up-north atmosphere that you're trying to carry over out there and offer, but you want to put a concrete slab in the middle of it? I'm not sure that's going to enhance anything to your up-north atmosphere. Now that said, I'm not so convinced that, or not convinced, I believe that, personally, I believe that Walden Woods Resort is more of a resort, not a typical commercial development. So I think that we could look at it a little differently, if we look at it as a resort area, and it is a PD in a straight commercial development, that's my personal opinion. I know you've made the argument that you want to, you filled this pond in, you're not asking, you're not saying you're going to have any more events or larger events, but you're utilizing a hole in the ground that was there now for an area of events, so I'm a little confused, are you going to have more events? I know you're trying to improve the quality of the event, but you do now, you would have the potential of increasing the size of the events and maybe more frequent by doing that. Otherwise, why bother spending the time and money to do it? So that's another confusing thing that I see. I guess that's kind of all I wanted to say.
We have, just a comment on the why the pad versus the grass, that, you know, it's really a matter of what do the brides expect, that they would like to have that, and that once you put a tent over it, it all gets stomped anyway. And then we end up putting down a temporary floor over it, and all the grass, you know, dies in that area. In terms of space, that you end up, it doesn't really matter about space, we have so much space, that's why I was trying to show in the pictures, that we've got huge amount of space down there for putting up tents and having events already. It's a matter of pulling stuff back, you know, behind, you know, all of that event space, so that you don't have cars up there, and you separate some of those things, and it becomes a nicer event space, because now you don't have cars and event stuff going on in the same proximity, because of that road going right down the middle. And that way, the parking can take place in a different area than the event area, and it will be nicer.
I do have one question about the resort itself. Now, the events, in particular the weddings, is that only offered to members, or can anybody walk off the street and reserve that for a wedding?
Anybody can come and reserve a wedding with us.
And that's true with most of the other events. I know some of the activities they have for the community, like Halloween and Christmas.
Right. So we have the membership operation, which is primarily in the campground and the cottages, and then you have the banquet center, which is Cromeine. and then you have the banquet center, which is Cromeine, and Friendship and Sunshine support that, for the most part. Joe?
At what point, one of the things we talked about here was revision to the plan development, looking at the entire, that's what's in your notes. At what point does a project come along that doesn't require some amendment to the plan development? I mean, what's the next project that you're planning on doing in the site, and then you're going to come in and say, well, we don't, we don't need, it's a minor adjustment? I mean, what, that, I'm struggling with the fact that, that at some point, we have to reach a point where you got to comply with some aspect of our, our laws, or, or are we just not going to apply the laws to Walden Woods, you know, the ordinance to Walden Woods? I mean, all this construction, as you're well aware, started even without any permits or coming through the township. The only reason why we found out about it, because there was a violation at, at the state level. So now you're before us, asking us to approve something that in the ordinary course of business, other people are required to do. So I'm struggling with that, why I would want to consider this, because of the process that has taken place thus far. Second thing, I'm kind of concerned with this, you sort of talk about, that it's not going to intensify the use, but that's not what we heard before. Because I heard numbers before, when you, when I met here, you threw out numbers in terms of what you hope to generate in order to pay for the cost, and you couldn't do the parking lot, you couldn't do any of that stuff because you just couldn't get enough revenue to come in through your process, your commercial operation. But, or it wouldn't be worth it to bring it in. So I'm, I'm still struggling, struggling like my colleague here, in terms of, I, I think that the goal here is to intensify the use. It's, it's to bring in more opportunity to Walden Woods. And so, in that sense, it, if that's what's going to happen here, then there's certain things that probably need to be upgraded. So that's, that's what I'm struggling with. The third item that I'm, I'm still, you know, this idea that you have a parking lot that only, and it's only forty-eight days, and it's only twelve percent, there's a lot of commercial oper, you know, operations, even the lawn fifty-nine, twenty-three, that can boast, if they use that logic, would be telling us they don't need to put in there. So are we going to get into regulating based on percentages of use? We don't do that. That's not how the ordinance operates. So I'm struggling with, how do we, how do we correct this, how we make it work? A third, a fourth item is that you mentioned that brides don't like to have to walk on, you know, grass, and they're wearing high heels and things like that. That same problem you have when you have a gravel parking lot. You're still going to have problems. I mean, I think upgrading the parking lot is probably the, going to generate more in terms of business for you, because that is what, and I, and I'd be honest with you, I've been to country clubs that are up north, in a very beautiful setting, all their parking lots are paved. I mean, where they do weddings as well and things like that, so, yeah, up north. Now, that being all said, I, I have a special affinity for Walden Woods. I had my own wedding there. I've been to multiple events there. It's, it's, it's dear, you know, dear to my heart, and I, I don't want to see a whole lot of changes. So, you know, I'm struggling with this, how we can make this work as well. I want to see it work. But I'm still having a problem with, I don't think the lighting is an issue for me. I don't, would not necessarily have a big idea, you know, big problem with the lighting. But the, of all the items on here, it's the parking lot that I'm struggling with. The idea that we're going to add more gravel and, and things like that, so.
Okay. Just to respond to your points that, you know, one, in terms of the numbers, going back to the numbers, I repeated the same numbers tonight. So, and, and actually, it's consistent with what I'm saying tonight, which is, we're not going to experience this huge revenue growth, because we're not starting anything new. So what's going on is I'm going to improve the quality of the product that I have, and that we aren't very comfortable doing larger events, but we can do them. So while a hundred and fifty is our comfort zone, we do two-hundred event there all the time. So it's not like I'm adding, I didn't say that last time. I said, I'll be more comfortable doing two-hundred, going from a hundred and fifty to two-hundred, but our average isn't going to go from a hundred and fifty to two-hundred. We're just going to be better at, we're going to be better at doing these events. I think, if anything, we'll make more money, because we'll have nicer cars driving in, because we'll have higher-end, higher-end clients hopefully, that would want to do this product, but not because I'm going to do more. So I'm actually consistent with what I said before, the same numbers, I just didn't say that, hey, we also do five-hundred-person events, you know, multiple events at the same time there. We do three-hundred-person events there. So I went and talked to our banquet's director after our conversation, so I need more information. And so that's the kind of stuff she said. In terms of how we got started, you know, we got started looking at this as maintenance, of going, okay, this is a problem, we need to fix it, and I guess we assumed too much. And we got it handed to us, and now we've, we're fixing those things and moving forward appropriately. So I regret that I didn't understand the process well enough at that time, but I'm, I'm making sure that this time, that I don't miss anything, so that everything is in front and, and straightforward with you. So, you know, and again, why would you make an exception for Walden Woods? Because it's so different. There's nothing like it in the community. Frankly, there's very few places like it in Michigan. And it's a very unique venue, and people seek out Walden Woods because of that. And I, we want it to stay that way. It has a certain market niche, it's a certain place, and what we're asking for with this plan is consistent with that. It's not something like way out there on the box, it's, it's right on line with what we've been doing.
Okay. And if I could, Joe, my apologies. I, I had no intention of attempting to redefine the methodology of calculating use of parking lots, although that's a very interesting argument. Not my intent and purpose, but I, I would respectfully disagree that, that I think any business, twenty-three, fifty-nine, almost anywhere else in the community, is open five days a week. They're open six days a week. They're used five or six days a week. You get cars in and out of the parking, maybe you only get one for every ten spaces. I agree. That's not a criteria we want to go to for determining whether or not a parking lot needs to be paved. My only reason for expressing the number, the, the rough calculation, is just to give you an idea of the very, very limited use that these parking lots see. It, it's not, it's not as if the, the wear and tear and the potholes are going to sprout up in the parking lot overnight, because we have cars coming and going, they're just not used that hard. So I, I had no intention of attempting to, although it's an interesting strategy, maybe you'll see it on my next project. I wasn't intending to go back.
It's also the terms that are used in why we're, we're saying this is justified within the ordinance, that it says, you know, if it's seasonal and/or limited-use facilities, provided that the applicant or property owner provides sufficient evidence that the gravel surface will support the volume of traffic, then it's okay for the planning commission may permit gravel surfaces. So that, you know, it's, it is limited use, it is seasonal use, it perfectly fits in this exception, within the ordinance, not, without having to ask for favors. So, and that's, I think, where Wayne was coming from as well. Okay. Mike, you got anything to add?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Excuse me. So I understand what you're asking for. This is a new drive that you would like to put in?
Correct.
And the reason for that is, if you had an event going, then you could close off the drive in front, which is the view from their event to the lake. This is also a widening project? You want to widen this roadway?
Correct. So you could make that two-way to get back to there. Right now, it's all one-way coming out.
It's all one-way. And then, is, I, I apologize for all the questions. I'm probably the only one sitting up here who has not visited Walden Woods, so I'm unfamiliar with the property.
We'll fix that.
So what is this little, is this a loop in the road as well?
That's meant to be a service access road, so that what we do is, our kitchen is over in Cromeine, our main banquet hall, and we bring food over to our events over here at Friendship and Sunshine. And that would be a quick, easy turnaround for them to drop things off.
I see.
And pick things up, and zip out without being seen.
Okay. Okay. Why don't you do a, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of the delivery back and forth is like on golf cart type vehicles?
We have a van, and don't typically use golf carts for that.
Okay.
So, but yeah, they, they come from back here, and they drive, and the idea is they move around and be able to get out. And then in terms of the traffic flow that you were talking about, that right now, it comes from up here and comes down, and then people go this way or this way, and these roads are two-way. So this, by making it a little bit wider, would, would allow you to get access to this road now to get back here. And then you can get back to the Sunshine and Friendship parking lots, and to the event site, parking. And currently, people park.
So currently, since this parking area doesn't exist, they just park wherever on the grass there?
Yeah. So we park on the grass. We have, people park along the edge here, and they'll park along the edge here, and along the edge here. And that's the way we've been doing it for decades. And I, you know, got involved about ten years ago, back, back, came back to the family business, and we've been busy trying to rebuild it. You know, my dad rebuilt it back in nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five, and, you know, things are old again, you know, since then, unfortunately. And now it's time to, to reinvest and try to build a, a better Walden Woods. And, you know, this is something that I think is more the norm, too. Maybe it used to be it was okay to be just outside on the grass, but people are looking for a more stable surface under their tent. Anything else, Mike?
Yeah, one more question. Again, I apologize, this, this is, other than playing golf around it, that's all I've seen of the area. So this pad area was previously the retention pond.
Correct.
And so prior to that time, in, in the past year, you must have set these tents up in other locations, and obviously you didn't put it there.
Right. So we have multiple locations where we put the tents. We put them here.
So up front of the, of what would have been the retention area?
Right, right up front.
I see.
We put them here.
Okay.
In front of French, actually, this, this walking path isn't there, so we put them here. We put them here. And we put them here. Or here. So it's a, it's a, really a massive area. I mean, it's a massive open area, so creating, I am pressing the wrong button, making this more useful space doesn't add more event space for me, really. It really just adds the possibility, and I'm not going to put an event back here when I can put it up here, you know? They want to be right up by the lake.
Absolutely.
So, you know, the only, only benefit here was to get rid of the brush, and say, okay, how can we use this space better, and rather than have people park all over the place, we can organize it, make it a little bit, a better quality event. It really would make a, a huge improvement in our quality of our product. So I'm really excited about it. Perhaps got too excited, too early, but I'm in the air of my ways. And now we're trying to do everything that we can to make this project happen, and I'm trying to explain, you know, if you have any other questions, I'm absolutely open to them. I have nothing to, I'd like to go on said tonight, everybody has their opportunity. And I have great counsel here with my engineering, so, and Wayne's always been a phenomenal engineer for, for Heartland, in Heartland, and working with us, so he's making sure that everything works very well and flows. Okay. Anything else right now? I mean, there, you can have more questions and comments, giving everybody a shot before I say something.
I would think that with the proper drainage and the sand base that you have out there for soil, that increased area of parking would be great to have anyway, whether you kept a gra, made it gravel or kept it grass. I, I think with the proper drainage, it'd be a wonderful area to park, and you're not altering the look. And I don't think you're really not offering that much of less quality of a product, because you're only going from gravel to grass, and a lot of events I've been to, they park on grass. Places even have demarcations of where they want the vehicles to park, in the grass. So if you just added your slab of concrete, even though I, I'm having a hard time understanding that, but anyway, the, it'd be easier for me to swallow a slab of concrete out there and, and not a gravel parking lot, because you have so many things that are working against how ordinance is, and, again, my opinion.
Okay. Yeah, and that, the, the key thing for us to improve the quality of the event is the pad. And that really is going to make a big difference with the people, that when they come out, it'll make it a much cleaner, smoother experience for everybody. You know, the next step up would be the parking. And then the next step up would be to have a back drive, so that we wouldn't have to have people going up. So that's kind of my logic in saying, okay, this is what people are asking for, let's give it to them. So, yeah, you're right. You could do it on grass, like we could do a gravel, for grass parking out in the back, which is, you know, and I'd have to figure out a way to get irrigated, so that we would have growth. But that's a possibility. I don't think it's the best one, but it certainly could work, especially with the, you know, the infrequent use, that it would, it would probably work. And that's why I look at that, and I go, well, I could do that. Prefer not to, but I could do that. And, and move forward still, and, and probably do the drainage swell and the, and the pad. You know, and then maybe down the road, do the parking. That's where I'm kind of looking at it, I've been looking at it in stages, where I look at the, the parking, and I go, okay, I've actually got a, a design for what could be, like a big, it's a schematic drawing of a building, which we can't afford to build, so, and it's not going to happen in, anytime soon. But theoretically, if I could, you know, raise our product quality and charge more money, that I would be able down the road to be able to build or pave the, pave the parking, and then bring it in, if that were to work. I'm looking at it more like, now, of saying, hey, in the future, if I were to build a building, that's when I would pave everything. You know, if I were to put in a building there, and that was going to be the spot, the problem is, I don't know if that's ever going to be the spot. It's a small area, like you were saying, in terms of adding parking, it, it's a pretty small, even the parking area there that we would be quote adding, is not adding a lot of parking space. It's not a lot of parking spots. It's point seven-five acres, I think. It's a, it's a relatively small parking area, anyway. So, but it would move some of those cars that are on the grass into the back, behind the event scene, and make it a lot nicer.
So let me ask, from that discussion, do you have a... So, let me ask from that discussion, do you have a future development plan for the resort? I mean, are you looking for in the future? Would possibly one day this pad become another building?
I don't know. We looked at all sorts of options when we went through this. So, we started out, we're thinking it was going to be a pad. Then we said, oh, what if we put a pavilion in? Then we wouldn't have to rent a tent. And then we said, well, we're not going to be able to charge anymore for that, so we might as well just keep renting the tents. And then we said, well, what if we were to put a building in? Could we charge, you know, more? Could we get more year-round use and all of that? And we looked at that business model and it doesn't make sense now. Theoretically, in the future, I wouldn't rule it out, but it's not something, I'm marching towards this, not towards some other plan. But theoretically, in the future, you know, I wouldn't rule anything out. I mean, there's opportunities to do different things.
So...
But I don't have...
Hey, here's my question then. You don't necessarily have a future plan drawn out that says, you know, someday in the future, we'd like to develop this area into a particular event lodge or...
No. One thing that we've talked about as a family is, one day in the future, probably makes sense for us to build a second Cromeines, which is a big indoor venue. That would probably serve multiple purposes. But right now, it doesn't make sense to do it.
Okay.
But someday in the future, maybe, it was a big part, you know, we have big parts of the property around the lake. There's another location or two that might make a better sense, that have more open area and easier access.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you had like a future plan already developed that says, you know, go stage one to stage two. My last question is, could you estimate for me how many cars you think you could park in that gravel lot?
We did a quick sketch early on. I don't remember the exact number, but it was in the neighborhood of about 38. Like, 36, something, something in between.
Dave, did you have a comment?
Obviously, leaving aisles.
I think one of the questions of, is there a future plan? I think that's a point that we do need to get to. And it comes back to a question that Trustee Kliney asked, which is, you know, kind of when do we get to the point where the future improvements at this site and at Walden Woods can't be just sort of the, kind of these one-off proposals? That there has to be an overall master plan for this resort so that when we and/or our predecessors are looking at a proposal years down the line, we can go back and look at that master plan and say, yes, that is consistent with the master plan that came before this plan and commission years ago and therefore is consistent with what everyone agreed is the future vision for the resort. And I think in our discussions with Mr. Kraus, one of the things that came up was perhaps where we draw that line is if do they get to the point of a new building or really anything else significant going vertical? That that's the point where we say, okay, this is a plan development, but we need to go through the plan development amendment process. We need to have that development agreement in place. We need to have that development plan in place as we would with any other plan development so that we're no longer finding ourselves and having unique discussions like we're having this evening of how do we proceed with this and how do we treat this? If there were a development plan in place for Walden Woods that was approved years ago that said, here's where we will put a gravel parking area someday, then that makes this conversation perhaps a bit easier for this planning commission. Without that, we're having these sorts of conversations that are sort of unique and maybe ambiguous. And so, there does need to be a point where we say there needs to be that development plan. We need to treat this as a true plan development. We didn't feel, at least myself and our site plan committee, didn't feel that the proposals that are before you tonight were that trigger for going through a plan development amendment process, which as this planning commission is well aware, is multiple trips to the planning commission, multiple trips to the township board. We felt that it was reasonable to treat this as a site plan. And the planning commission has the discretion to review and approve site plans. So, the decision, if there is to be any decision on this, does rest with this planning commission. That being said, with the plan development zoning, that does give this planning commission more discretion on that site plan than they would typically have. Again, coming back to what's making this proposal fairly unique. One other thing I wanted to touch on is the possibility of a grass parking lot. I don't know that our zoning ordinance permits that any more than it permits a gravel parking lot. So, I might not recommend that we take that conversation too far. Our zoning ordinance does speak to gravel parking lots in certain limited instances. It never speaks to grass parking lots. So, my same logic in saying, we need to be careful if we're going to review and approve a gravel parking lot. That rationale is only heightened if we're talking about a grass parking lot.
Anything else?
Just for the moment, anyway.
We wouldn't call it a parking lot if it was just grass.
If we call it grass, then we allow grass. Just don't call it a parking lot.
All right. I guess my comments, I was in the meeting that we had originally back several months ago. And I have thought about this a lot since that time, as Dave and I have talked on numerous occasions. And, you know, I can support your retroactive approval for filling in, you know, and resulting in the site elevation of greater than three feet and all those things and probably landscaping requirements around that. I think the nature of the area being very natural can probably sustain itself and look very pretty with just basically what you got there. But I'm having, I'm not having a conflict. I'm with what's going on here. It's pretty clear to me that you're trying to live the up-north life, the real country northern living, but you're trying to be something else with this particular venue. You're trying to grow it up and be bigger and be better. And you're already winning your award for being number one wedding location five years in a row with where you are. Now, certainly, standing at the top, you want to watch your competition and make sure you stay there. But that's your whole, that's what you're, that's what you're selling right now. And you're turning around and wanting to make it something different. And it is getting bigger and it is getting better. And I'm sorry, I just, I'm not having the conflict. I see this as, as an intensity of the use. I think it is more desirable and I do think you can hold more people there. And I have a huge concern for the public safety of the people back there. I've been there 20 times myself in the years I've lived here and wondered what would happen if we ever had an event occur back there. Getting 200, 300, 400 people out of there, getting fire trucks in, I can't imagine bringing the ladder truck back there. I can't even imagine what we would do. So, we're taking this up-north country feel that we want, but yet we want to put this commercial reception hall and continue to grow that particular business. So, I have a, I don't have a problem with it. For me, you need to fix the things that relate to what you really want this place to be. I'm concerned about the public safety. I'm sorry. To me, parking lot lighting should be required. There are things called timers and light switches. If you want to hold an event that has 200, 300, 400 people on a Saturday night there, there's nothing northerly about that. So, turn the lights on and get the people in and out of there. You know, people drink at these events, they're walking in dark parking lots. You're very fortunate, maybe you've never had an incident. But that's why we have these ordinance. It's about the health, safety, welfare of the community, of the people that are there. And I do get concerned about that. And I can appreciate you want a concrete pad so that they're not standing in the grass or they're not dealing with the tree roots. But I don't see it any different when they're walking from there to the parking lot or when they're trying to get out of there. I mean, those roads, some of those roads in there are, they're glorified car paths. Now, I don't have a problem with them right now, but true wanting to improve the place, let's do what we need to do to make it right. And so, I'll support the activity that's already been done. I can support the waiver of the landscaping, but I'm not going to, I will not support the gravel parking lot, the, all the, all the things that aren't here. The lighting, I have a problem with it. Turn the lights off when the people aren't there then. Turn them on your 40 days a year. And get the people out of there with the roads of the appropriate width and the appropriate surfaces. So, it isn't, it isn't that hard for me. I'm not, I'm not torn on it. I love Walden Woods for what it is, but I question whether you really want to keep it that way with where this could potentially go. And maybe need to divide off the commercial end from the up-north end with the cottages and the cabins and be rustic and make these resort centers and, or these conference centers and banquet facilities what they truly are, which is a commercial event venue. So, that's where I am with it. That's what I got to say. I waited for everybody to get their piece. So, are there any other comments or thoughts? And where would you guys like to go?
So, I'm understanding what your view is supportive of approving the site, the proposed site drainage and stormwater management plan as submitted. Approve the retroactively, the filling of the former pond.
Yep.
Approve the lighting of the existing uncurved commercial driveway.
I'm not so sure about that piece.
You would approve the concrete slab?
No.
No, waiver of the, waiver of the landscape.
I'd waive the landscape requirement on the pond. I don't support the slab. I think the slab turns into a, I think it has the potential to turn into...
Well, I will comment on that for a moment. I've been to the Walden Woods when they have tents and understand the predicament that they are in when it comes to, you know, having the tents there and so forth. I also, previous position, you know, I worked with venues like this, for example, at the Metro Park. And I know, I think out of Stony Creek, I believe they have a concrete slab and a semi-permanent tent. It goes up during the season and it comes down in the winter and it goes up again in the spring. And they do a lot of weddings. And it is a much, I think, a much better situation. Whether, I'm still concerned about whether that's actually going to create an intense, greater use of the, of Walden Woods, but I could support the slab. I think the slab is, is an improvement from the standpoint of what they are producing there now in terms of events. And I'm still struggling with the parking. That's the key thing. And I think some of the points you've made are valid points on...
They're only holding 40 events a year. A nice lawned area is easy to walk on for 40 events. You're not going to wear the grass out since you only hold 40 events a year. I think that was the number you said.
We did go with that.
So... I think on the event side.
So, I can make a motion to approve the specific components, site plan application number 532, Walden Woods Resort, one, to approve the proposed site drainage and stormwater management plan as submitted, subject to the applicant addressing the township engineer's review letter dated May 20th, 2015, on the forthcoming construction plans. Approve retroactively the filling of the former pond, subject to a determination that the fill material was free from contamination and on the condition that the reclaimed land is not utilized in a manner which will intensify the existing use. And my motion would be the proposed concrete slab, provide, allow for the proposed concrete slab as part of the site plan.
Are you going to add waiver for the landscaping?
Oh, excuse me. And the, and the waiver of the landscaping requirements.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion to approve the specific components of the site plan application 352 for Walden Woods Resorts, as mentioned, as listed by Commissioner Kliney, seconded by Commissioner Voight. Is there any further discussion?
So, you're approving, you're proposing to approve the widening of the drive as well?
No.
No.
The widening of the drive.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I'll say nay.
Nay.
Okay, point of clarification, if I may. We have four members here tonight. What vote is required to take any action?
Majority of what quorum that's present. Quorum is seven, our quorum is four out of seven. And then you deem a majority of the four.
Understood. Appreciate it.
And then we do have two people who are absent.
Just, just one other point of clarification. I'd like to, before any further action is taken by this commission, we would like to respectfully request to be tabled.
Taking the vote. Can we take, can we?
Well, so the motion, because there was not a majority, the motion fails. So, you do have the option of, of another motion to table.
Okay.
I'll move to table.
Before, I apologize. Can I just get clarification on the yays and the nays there? I know it was two to two. Yays? Thank you.
Is this a table or a postponement?
Yeah, it's just...
The table is later in the meeting, isn't it? Or the postponement is?
Yeah, motion, well, once it's on the table, depends on how you look at it. If you move the table, it stays on the table until such time that it removes and it's removed and placed on, back on the agenda. And so, the applicant, if we table it and it remains on the table, and then the applicant can request that it be removed from the table for reconsideration. Postponed, I think, takes you to a date certain...
Future date.
Where as a table, just it's indefinite period, so...
Okay.
I believe it.
All right. So, we have a motion to table from Commissioner Kliney. Do we have a second?
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay, motion carries. Thanks, guys. Next up is item nine, call to the public. Anyone?
This is the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're on item 8C. I'm sorry, jump down. We need to set a public hearing date of, for the draft 2015 comprehensive plan amendment of July 16th, 2015.
Yes, this date wasn't picked at random. This is the first opportunity for a public hearing after we go through the mandatory 42-day review period where our adjacent communities and the county and the region have their 42 days to review the proposed, proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan.
So, you need a motion?
We do need a motion formally setting a public hearing.
Is that a Thursday?
It'd be our normal meeting.
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to go on record. I will be away on that day. I'm going to be up north at a conference. So, not that I want to just, in case you don't have a quorum.
Don't call Joe. The 16th would be our meeting in July.
Right.
Could we get a motion to set that date?
Move to set the hearing date on the comprehensive plan for July 16th. Amendment to the comprehensive, 2015 comprehensive plan, public hearing date of July 16th, 2015.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Number 10, planners report.
Call to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was crossing them off too fast. Call to the public. Jumping ahead. Anyone?
We're almost done, so if you pay for sign...
Give us a couple minutes. All righty. Number 10, planners report. Sorry about that.
Thanks again. Get my notes here. Just a couple of quick updates on where some things stand. So, we hopefully are done doing our online shopping for the planning commission's tablets. There will be an agenda item for the township board this coming Tuesday for them to approve the budget so that we can go out and purchase those tablets. We're looking at the Microsoft Surface Pro. It sounded like everybody wanted a keyboard. And so, then we're also going to get those along with a subscription to Microsoft Office 365. So, once we have that budget approved on June 2nd, we'll go ahead and make that purchase and we'll have them for you as quickly as Microsoft can send them our way. The update on where some plans stand, so Walnut Ridge Estates... The update on where some plans stand, so Walnut Ridge Estates, this is the 64 homes behind Venture Church, they submitted their preliminary plan development amendment plan. That is currently under review. I know we got the review letter back from the engineer today, that they would love to be on for a public hearing as soon as possible, so we'll see what we can do as far as scheduling for that. Speedway submitted revised plans today, revised to meet some of our comments on their original submittal, where we said you need to clean some things up. They also would need a public hearing, because it's a gas station in general commercial zoning district, and that requires a public hearing. The other gas station would be at the corner of Clark Road and M-59, so that's a special land use, because it's not only a gas station, but it has a drive-through restaurant component, Dunkin' Donuts and a Baskin Robbins. So, those plans were submitted last week. Those are also under review, and we're looking to see when we can set a public hearing. When we know we are going to have a public hearing is on June 11th, our next planning commission meeting for Chestnut Development and a plan that they're calling Fiddler Grove. Those are the 24 detached condominiums on the south side of M-59, a plan that this planning commission has seen a few times before. That public hearing notice appeared in the press in Argus on May 27th, and also, the letters went out to everyone within 300 feet. We have had or are trying to schedule some concept meetings on some fairly significant residential developments, and also some commercial developments. So, it sounds like this increase in economic development activity is going to continue for a little while. And the last note I had was that our newest restaurant neighbor is Beale Street Barbecue over in shops at Walden Woods. They opened this week, and so far, the reviews have been pretty good, so since it's...
It's awesome.
Have you been to the one over there?
We go to the one in Fenton all the time. Now, I can go to the one down the house.
So, since I skip dinner on Thursday nights because of planning commission meetings, I might know where I'm going if they're still open on the way home.
Awesome.
Play music over there.
No. No, this is strictly a carryout and catering. Their full bar restaurant is still their Fenton location, so... That's everything I had in my notes to bring you up to date on this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Committee reports. Anybody, anything? Motion to adjourn, please.
So, moved. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Thank you, and good evening.